I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October 10th, 2016. And due to the prior National Merit Scholars and Commended Reception just prior to this board meeting, we are at 7:15 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, there are some increases and decreases in assignments, as well as a grant application in this evening's table file.
Okay, excellent. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, September 26th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, September 26th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, this evening, our first announcement recognition is a presentation. Our high school Torch coordinators, Kim Horner and Teddy Gelderman, will be presented the Prevention Champion Award by Shelley Cole from the Rice County Chemical Health Coalition. This award is given to individuals and groups who work to support young people and make our community a healthier place to grow up. Shelley?
Thank you very much. First, I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us time today to present these awards. Prevention Champion Awards are given to individuals who have helped provide support for a healthier life for young people in our community. And I think it will be obvious after I share a few things that these two fit that bill. Teddy Gelderman and Kim Horner were nominated to both receive Prevention Champion Awards. And I just want to read a little bit from their nomination form, just so that everyone here has a better picture of why these two people are so important in our district. Kim and Teddy have served with Torch for the last five years, and over that time have increased the number of high school students served to over 300 per year, plus an alumni cohort that has grown to over 100 students seeking assistance after graduation. During that time, the graduation rate for Torch Latino students at Northfield High School has remained at 95% or above, significantly increasing the opportunities and outcomes for these students. So I think we can all agree that those things are really important. Among the things that Teddy and Kim do for Northfield High School is offering academic support, college and career exploration, ACT preparation, critical skill development, access to PSEO coursework, help with the FAFSA, which that's pretty important, too, connections to out-of-school supports. All of those things are really great. But I think probably what strikes us the most as Chemical Health Coalition staff is the emotional support that they provide to students, the way that they're there to provide understanding and kind of a shoulder to lean on for kiddos that maybe don't have that support in other areas of their life. These awards are reserved for individuals who go above and beyond in their efforts to connect with and serve and build assets for young people. And I think we can all agree that these two individuals certainly fit that description, not only in the tasks that they perform, but in the heart that they put into the work that they do for us every day. So it is my privilege to be able to present awards to Teddy Gelderman. Congratulations. And to Kim Horner. Thank you very much.
And I think Marty Thompson might want to say a couple of things here, too.
Of course I do. First of all, I want to say that they both ran the marathon yesterday. And Kim Horner was in eighth place among the women. Yep, top 10. So I just want to say a couple of things because Kim and Teddy are incredibly gifted at what they do, and I get to see their work every single day. And I want to point out, there's so many things that they do well. But number one is kids know that they care. And kids know that they care almost more than kids care about themselves. And we all know that the number-one protective factor for kids is a caring adult, and they are the epitome of caring adults in these kids' lives. Secondly, they believe that every single kid can learn. And after a while of believing and telling them, the kids actually start to believe that they can learn, too. And I see that play out every single day in the office, that they just don't give up. They are so persistent with kids, and finally, kids actually believe as well. And then lastly, they really do instill a sense of hope, a sense of possibility, and they get kids moving on a future orientation. And I think that that is really also a huge protective factor for these kids, is that they believe in something beyond, which really keeps kids out of trouble because they have something to work for and they have a future orientation that they believe in. So those, to me, are the things that Kim and Teddy do exceptionally well that really gets our kids on the right path. And so there's no one more deserving than this award, I think, than Kim and Teddy. So thanks.
Let them go rest now.
Yes. And congratulate, eighth place, well done. We have one other announcement this evening, another very proud moment for the school district. Northfield Public Schools Orchestra Department is excited to share the news that they have been named the 2016 Meritorious Orchestra Program of the Year by the Minnesota String and Orchestra Teachers Association. The award recognizes excellence in teaching at all levels of the program, as well as student engagement, strong enrollment, and outstanding performance. Natalie Kruger, Heather Olivier, and Paul Ausley will be receiving this award at a luncheon on Thursday, October 20th, during Minnesota's annual Fall Clinic. We want to congratulate Natalie, Heather, and Paul, and of course, all of our orchestra students. It's a distinct honor for our orchestra program, we're incredibly proud of their hard work as well. So those are our announcements for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, are there anything else anyone would like to add? No? Okay. So we will move on with the agenda items. First item for discussion and report, School Improvement Plan Presentation. And Northfield Middle School will present first. Here to present is Greg Geleno, Northfield Middle School Principal.
Good evening. Let's go back. Start the recording. There we go. This evening, it's our School Improvement Plan. We have it broken into two parts. I'm first of all going to do a little bit of review very quickly through how we did over this past year with our goals that we had for last year, and then I'd like to spend the majority of my time actually talking about the kind of exciting things that we're doing this year. I'm going to give you a snapshot, both with our goals and how we're going to go about those goals. But first, a little bit of a preview. And our first goal we had for last year was something that will refresh your memory. When I was standing up here doing it, I mentioned that if I could have rewound time by about two months, this goal would have been much different. But by the time analyzing data and things, they kind of trained it off the track already, so to speak. And so we kind of just went with it. Our site improvement team did come up with this and wanted to do a 15% higher than the state average in both the math and reading MCA III tests. I kind of knew in my heart that that's a difficult thing for staff to kind of grasp the concept and to really attack it. So we kind of had a plan going this year, which I will come to eventually. But how did we do? As you look at it, clearly, we did not meet our goal of 15%. As a matter of fact, if you look at this data, and I did a little bit of analysis, looking back several years, the middle school, really, in both math and reading, has kind of, for a lack of a better way of putting it, kind of flatlined. We go up a little bit some years and then down a little bit, but all within a pretty specific range as you go back. And that's something that it's like, start asking the question, why is this? I know there's learning going on, so what can we do different? Or how can we go about this to kind of move that needle, so to speak, up? So that's what we're going to look at for this year. But as we move on, our second goal was, had to do with, actually, the next two are going to have to do with the MTSS program, or Multi-Tierred System of Supports. We have one in math that Dan Myers runs, and we have one, Rose Turner Clifford Reading. And to be honest, when we created this goal, we kind of just threw out the 75%. We really weren't sure how we were going to do. So we said, let's shoot high. Just a reminder, the students they worked with at the bottom 20th percentile, non-special ed students in our building, and it was funded through some access funds that we received. So there's some strict criteria on what qualifies and what does not qualify. Well, as you can see, they came really close. They did a really nice job. Our students really liked the program. They bought into it. I would actually, we didn't do this, but being through those classes and listening to both Dan and Rose talk, those students, I really think that may have been one of their favorite classes, actually, is to go there. So it was really a big success, we felt. And then we, the second part of that goal with MTSS was, could we move those kids, again, those bottom 20%, could we move them up an achievement level? That's a lot more difficult. You're not just talking growth. For some of these students, that is a really large jump to get from does-not-meets to partially-meets or partially-meets to meets. I'm happy to report, now, we didn't hit the 50%, but we did really well. And I don't have the number, but I can tell you that many of these students that did move up were actually some of the lower students. They grew, and some of them even grew more than two grade levels as they went up. We had one young lady, I actually believe she was a Latino student in reading, that went from does-not-meets to actually meets. So it was really a success. We were very excited. No, we didn't hit the 50%, but I think we're going in the right direction. Then we went to science, and science is kind of a moving target. There's a lot of standards there, not sure what's going to be on the test, some things some years on the test, some things aren't. The science folks talked about both 678s, some common vocabulary, so they really kind of did a little more systematic review. And as you look, we came really close to the 8%. We got 6.1% higher than the state, and that is also an improvement off of our last year's score. So we're feeling pretty good about that as well. And then we, as you look at, we did a climate goal, a couple of climate goals. This one, we were pretty excited about. The part that did not kind of help us out is we had a difficult time. We gave a survey three times throughout the year. Survey was pretty good, but it really wasn't getting us the information to really answer this question. So I was a little bit disappointed with that. But we did still glean some good info off the survey. As you look at this, some of the things that we did get, there are 700 students that took it total over the course of giving it three different times. It's on a four-point scale, and asking students, do they feel connected to the middle school? And they could kind of, whatever that means to them. Are you feeling connected? They averaged a 3.13 out of the four points, so we're on the upper end, which I think is good. And then as we look at the next climate goal, trying to, again, is there an adult that they connect with at school that they feel comfortable with? And again, we have some good data where, again, they're above that three mark out of a four-point scale, which I think is a good thing. Obviously, room for improvement, but I think it's a good start. And then I threw in there a little additional fact with our NMS Pride. We did throw in a question, how many students, we were curious, how many students could actually write? It was a fill-in-the-blank. It wasn't a multiple choice or anything. They actually had to write out Pride, and what does the acronym stand for? And 71% of our students could do that. Again, I think a good start, since last year was our first full year of implementing the Pride program at the middle school. I thought that was pretty good. And then we built off that with this coming year. And now for where we go from here. And as I mentioned, the first one, I mean, we always have to work with the MCA data. So our first goal is, we're going to shift from trying to do all-school percentage to really bringing it back into the classroom. And so our site improvement team decided, let's just work on straight growth. Let's just look, and that's something that a teacher can look at their class and say, okay, I can move 5% of my kids, or make sure that I'm moving at least 5% of my kids higher than the year before. I'm saying that kind of funny. Looking at last year's results, we want to move 5% more kids, so they improve more based on students that scored very, the same as they did. So it's called a Z-score. So we want a positive Z-score moving forward. And it's something that's attainable. It's something that's really down to their classroom, and I think it's going to make it a little bit easier, not easier to change, but easier to kind of grasp the concept of it, not quite so overwhelming. And some of the things that we're going to do is, we're going to continue with our Wednesday reads. On Wednesdays during fourth or fifth hour, depending on the class, the whole middle school reads. They take 10, 15 minutes. Everyone pulls out a book, they stop what they're doing, and they just read. It's just quiet reading. Teachers role-model it. Sometimes I'll go in a class and I'll role-model it. There's different staff that will. Our student support staff will do that now and then as well. It's something the students really like. The staff are really liking it. And we picked on, just for the background a little bit, we kind of picked on Wednesdays because of the late start with classes being shorter. Our fourth and fifth hour blocks cannot be shorter because it's over lunch. So we're basically, it's keeping class times the same. So there's really no instructional loss over that period of time. Something else we're doing that we're excited about, as part of that MTSS program, just one component, was a web-based kind of tool that they use both for math and reading. The math one's called Think Through Math. The reading used Compass last year. We had some issues with that. It was really time-intensive. So we're using Success Maker this year. We think that's going to be a better alternative. But it works so well with our students, let's see if we can broaden that. So what has happened is, is I actually posed it to our sixth-grade math folks, just wanted to do it with everyone. So they were like, yeah, bring it on, let's do this. The sixth-grade reading teachers, a little bit more hard of a sell, they were willing to try it. I originally said, hey, let's just try one class. To their credit, they looked at the program, they said, you know, if we're going to do this, we'll just go all in. So they're going to do all their students as well. So in sixth grade, they'll do this added tool, like I said, Success Maker for the reading, Think Through Math for the math component. And it's just something that they do a few times a week for about 20 minutes for fidelity, and we're hoping that's really going to help them progress. It worked for the MTSS program, so let's see if we can expand that into just the general ed classes. And then, of course, our just general staff development. Knowledge is power. Through presentations that I do, Hope Langston will do a data presentation, actually coming up at a staff meeting, to explain what it means to, by gap, if you're looking at FRP students, what is a Z-score? People have had this, a refresher's always good, and then how do you move the needle? I mean, how do you get at those things? So those are things that will happen. There are staff meetings and staff development as well. And again, those are just a few of the items. Our next goal is to actually try addressing our gap. And again, I'm kind of excited about this. We want to reduce the 10% in both math and reading and all the grades. And that previous slide, all of those things also work towards this. But in addition to that, it's important to think of other curricular areas. It's just not a math thing, it's just not a reading part. So science is kind of, they actually, last summer, started collaborating and saying, okay, how can we help? And what they did is, their seventh and eighth-grade science teachers did some curriculum writing over the summer. They created a study tool that's on their iPad that students can access, any student, so all their classes can access it. But specifically, they were targeting our after-school program for, so, and they trained or showed our afternoon school program in the middle school youth center how to utilize this tool, as well as our special ed case managers and EL teachers as well. So that their students that they have, that they support, this is just another way that they can help support their students. And science teachers created it, so they know it's going to connect specifically with each unit that they do. So again, we're excited about that, to see how that works out. I can't see a downside. I don't know how it can't help, but we'll see as we move forward. And as I said, the previous slide then also addresses that. Looking at a climate goal, we're continuing with Pride. It's going places. We're on the move with it. But for this, we want to, as you saw, it's 71% students that could actually recite or write down the Pride acronym. We want to boost that up to 81%, so increase of 10%. With our ultimate goal moving forward, to push the envelope and let's get to, eventually get to that 100% mark. How are we going to do that? Besides, well, I'll get to that in a second. Here's one of the ways we're doing it. Our morning news program, many of you, if not all of you know, we do a morning news program run by students, both filmed, sound. We have anchors that are students. But what we did is, on Mondays, we're creating, Mondays are Pride Day. It's an NMS Pride Day. We show up, and either myself, Mr. O'Keefe, could be Ms. Hudson, sometimes it is just students. And we really cut to the chase. There's no student segments on those days. It's just the bare minimum announcements. We talk about Pride. And there may be a short message about Pride from myself, but quite often, there's a video. Students are engaged by the video. We have, through Justin's, we use Harbor videos, which is phenomenal if you haven't seen them. You can go on our middle school website and preview it. It really, the gentleman that doesn't, his name's escaping me, is really engaging, he's someone the kids connect with, and he's got a terrific message. And then along with those are kind of talking points for our students, so the classroom teachers then have the ability to have a conversation about the video in general. So that's what's on Mondays, as well as our lessons at the beginning of the year. We have to, we don't leave anything, part of PBIS is making sure you're teaching what you expect. Don't assume all students know things. So we had those lessons the first two weeks of school. We recognize students for good behavior, what they're doing, just doing great things in the school. We have something called Pride Tickets, and we recognize those students every other week as well, with drawings, and they get prizes. Sixth-grade team presentations. We find it's important to start with our sixth grade. We, they're kind of the building blocks moving forward, so we hit them maybe a little bit harder with a little more, more often. And so myself, Mr. O'Keefe, the student support, Ms. Yamri and Ms. Striflin, they go into classrooms as well, and they do presentations and talk to students about different Pride topics. And finally, one of the things I set as a goal actually last year, is I start challenging our staff to really, now, we've kind of got this culture going with the NMS Pride. It's something that's in our hallways, you can see it visibly. Students expect it, but now my challenge to them is, bring that language in your classroom, because that is truly the next level. To really make it a true part of our culture, all the adults have to use the language. And so we've talked about that. I led off the start of the year talking about that. I continue to have conversations as I walk through classrooms on a regular basis. If I see opportunities that maybe a staff member could have maybe thrown it in there, I chat with them about it and say, hey, maybe think about this next time this comes up. There's a great opportunity to use the word dependability or integrity, just your natural lesson, just things that happen in your classroom, be thinking, be looking for those opportunities. So that's our kind of, our next level, and that's one that I get to kind of lead that and see if I can get the staff. And I've seen some of that as I've walked through. Our Pride Tickets have increased the number of students receiving them, so that also tells me they're doing it, and they're looking for it, so we are excited about that. The next one has to do with, it's kind of a little bit of an old one. A few years ago, we had a connectedness goal, and so we're going to kind of go back to it. We know that students that are connected to their school are more successful, so we threw one in there. We want, our site improvement team actually had a long discussion on what does it meant by participating in an activity at Northfield Middle School? Is it just athletics? Is it athletics and academics? So what about student council? What about the web leaders? And so what we came up with is, anything outside of their subjects. So anything that's not on their schedule, when you print it off Skyward, is considered an activity as long as it's sponsored by the school. So that would make, student council would count, yearbook would count, and all those other activities. And we kind of got a baseline data last year. We had to add some of those extras in because we just did the athletics, but then we'll compare to two years, and we're hoping to increase that by 5%. And how we're going to do that is, I send out a weekly reminder to parents. I do that, I've been doing it for the last couple of years with good response from parents. They really enjoy it. But it's really keeping you out in front of parents' deadlines. Here's how you sign up for this. Here's what's coming up, as a good tool, because parents do read that. And then something new. We're doing a sixth-grade parent information night, which we have just recently came up, I don't catch your name than that. It's called, I can't get it right, Parents Summit 2016. And we are going to try something. Over the summer, our student support staff and our administrative team, we got together, and we did a little bit of a talking on what we're doing well, what we want to see for the future, and we kind of came up with this idea, is we've all been working with students and families for quite a few years, and there's certain topics that always just come up, and it's typically a sixth grade. So we're going to offer an opportunity and really advertise for parents to come in and see if we can get on the front end of this. So we're going to be the presenters. There's just some of the topics that are there, and we'll see how many parents we can get in and have good discussions along the way on just how to support their students, both academically, socially, emotionally, and just ways to get connected to the school in general. We intentionally picked, it's coming up on November 3rd, because it's in between sports seasons, so we thought that was a good time to, maybe the dust settles for a couple of weeks and we can get students in as well. Plus, it's after conferences and report cards and things of that nature. So before I go to questions, though, even though it's a slide, I had something that fell in my lap today, and Denia's going to pass it out. We had a sixth-grade student that had a writing assignment for a teacher. They could pick any topic they wanted. Well, this sixth-grade student got really excited, because I talked to the teacher, Ms. Peterson, and she said, yeah, he immediately came up with, I want to write about NMS Pride. Why wouldn't I? And he was just pumped for it. And Ms. Peterson told me, she goes, he's my writer. He's a good writer. And this is what he came up with. No help from his teacher, nothing. And she kind of passed it on, it eventually got to me, and then I tracked him down and said, who helped you with this? And he goes, no, it's just what I believe. This is awesome. He goes, I love NMS Pride. I love the middle school. He was just excited. So I asked him if I could share it with you, and he really got excited that you guys are going to get a copy of it. So his name's on the bottom, you guys can read it on your own. But this is truly, this is just one of the many reasons why we are doing PBIS and NMS Pride, is for exactly what that student was. He's instantly connected with the school, and you can see his thoughts. And I felt good about that, and better yet, he feels good about it. And that's the goal. So thank you.
Wow, thank you. This is amazing. So, board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
So first, what I liked about the school improvement plan for next year, or this academic year, is that your goals seem aspirational but achievable, and that you were thinking about how to make them meaningful for teachers, and then I really like how there's multiple measures that you're talking about. What I'm curious about is, this has been a subject at DPAC, is how do these school improvement plans come to be? So I was hoping that you could tell us a little bit about how, particularly because you're on the spot, you're one of the first, the first one we're hearing.
I'm first. I chose the spot, by the way.
Okay.
We have a site improvement team, oh, sorry. Yeah, go for it.
And it would help me either as part of the answer or as a tack-on to the answer about hearing the calendar of how they get developed.
Sure. I'll roll them in together. The middle school's site improvement team, they have some parents and staff members on, and then myself, Mr. O'Keefe. And there's a couple, I'll call it housekeeping things, that have to do with, we have a small budget that we can decide what we want to do with, for example. One of the things that we focused in on this year is, we always are looking, try to spruce up our outside. So if you notice, if you came to the middle school, we have something new in the front of our building. We have picnic tables, and we actually have a couple handicap ones on back orders still. So that was, came out of the site improvement team. But really, the number-one goal of the site improvement team is to craft goals for the next year. When I started as principal a few years ago, the timing, to me, was a little bit off. We were always approving them into the next school year for that school year. And to be honest, it was, it drove me a little, it increased my stress quite a bit, because then you're approving them and then having to do this. So what I did is, my second year, I said, I'm going to push that back. So I kind of put the fire... And to be honest, it was, it drove me a little, it increased my stress quite a bit because then you're approving them and then having to do this. So what I did is my second year, I said, I'm going to push that back. So I kind of put the fire, the feet to the fire for the site improvement team and said, okay, we need to have this done before the end of the year. So now what we do is I do a data presentation, hope Langston comes in and kind of looks at data. We do some brainstorming on different topics, different areas. We try doing some climate goals as well as the academic piece. And eventually through about three meetings, we kind of craft some goals. I take those goals back to our staff through a staff meeting. I throw it out, I solicit some input, and then I bring it to the last meeting typically, I bring it back to the site improvement team. And I said, here's kind of what the staff has said, and if we have to tweak it, to be honest. Our site improvement team, we've been very fortunate, has been such a good job. Our staff really has done very little change. There's a couple of times where they just said some wording things or, you know, questions about something, how we came up with this, but for the most part, everyone's been on the same page moving forward. So then they improve, they approve those goals then, which is in, end of April, beginning of May, which is for the following year. What that allows me to do then is when I'm planning for workshop week then the following year, like this workshop week, I already have the goals approved, so then I'm able to focus on some of those topics and those goals with the staff right off the bat. Cover both?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And tell me about when in this, when in the year, so it sounds like the first thing is that Hope comes in and does a presentation, and then there's a series of meetings. When does that start?
We have our first meeting coming up here in about a week and a half, two weeks. Typically, we can get it done in four meetings. I always preface that with the site improvement team that we may have to do a fifth if we kind of see how we go. We may have to squeeze one extra one in depending on how, how well we're going with our goals. But we've been able to do it in four so far.
Board members, other questions or comments?
I just had, well, one comment for sure. I just love you, you get so energized and just light up when you talk about pride, and it's just so great to see the momentum behind that. And I think one of the things we learned just from listening to the National Merit Scholars and the commended scholars is they talked about relationships and how that was so impactful for them. And of course, Dr. Hillman recapped that beautifully in a message to, to close the reception, but just talking about the relationships and, and nowhere else is it more important, I think, than middle school in many ways. And, you know, helping them forge those relationships, not only with the caring of health, but with each other, I think is just really incredible. And I just, I'm so excited to see you guys gaining the momentum and continuing forward with it, so.
It is very exciting. Thank you.
Great work. Yes, Dr. Hillman?
I just want to point out, one of our commitments is to continuous improvement. And part of being committed to continuous improvement is not to dwell on, you know, what happened in the past. I think last year's goals of the middle school were stretch goals. Let's point out that while Greg was showing that, hey, we didn't quite hit the goal that we wanted to, the goal was to have the school perform 15% higher than the state average. They still performed 6% and 4% higher than the state average and still didn't meet their goal. This is exactly the kind of thinking we want. We want aspirational goals, and we don't want to dwell on saying, well, we didn't make the bar that we had set for ourselves. You did not hear that. Of course, Greg looked at it and said, hey, how could we have done this differently to maybe have achieved closer to the desired results? But we're not crying in our milk, you know, we are looking forward and saying, what's next? And I think that that's a piece you're going to hear over and over in the school improvement plans because we are committed to continuous improvement. And when you're committed to continuous improvement, you have to accept that sometimes you're going to achieve the goal that you've set for yourself, which all of the goals of middle school set were very high. And when you set them last year, I think many of us said, oh, all right, that'd be great if you could achieve it, but even though you couldn't check off that the results were achieved, the results are still right on the right track. And so I just, I want to point that out, that the goal was 15% higher than the state average, and they still performed 6% and 4% above. That's the kind of thinking that we want. So I thank you, Greg, for you and your team's work to be committed to continuous improvement, and not to dwell on what happened, but what's next. So, great job.
Yep. It's all about growth moving forward.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have Joelier here to present the site improvement plan for Northfield High School.
I'm having trouble seeing. All right. Good evening, everyone. I think I have wiped the last remnants of cake off my sleeves from our National Merit event here, so thank you for the opportunity to share our site improvement plan, our progress report inside improvement plan with you today. And I, I think one of the things that, you know, Greg has, has settled into a, a good rhythm at the middle school, and I think one of the things that I've really enjoyed over the last couple of years is, is we have this mutual willingness to copy each other. And by copy each other, I mean some of the ideas that we individually have, but also some of the things that are going well at each of our buildings. I think you'll see that, that we've kind of recognized that, wow, good idea over there, might be a good idea over here. And, and so I think that's been a cool part of, of this process in, as Greg and I kind of move forward as, as middle school and high school principals. So our, our plan here, as, as I kind of reflected on, on the notion of what are the, the kind of the takeaways of both the progress report and the improvement plan, I really kind of settled on the notion of, and, and we've talked about this before, and I think the most significant fact about the bullet that I have there at the top is that it's still there. And so last year, if you remember, I spoke at this, this time and said, for the first time, I can stand up before you and seriously say, I believe that 100% passing rate is something that's within our grasp, given the, the instructional excellence we have, coupled with the MTSS support model that we put into play. And the fact that that's still there means that it, a year later, a year smarter, and still very much in our sights in terms of something that, that we believe, well, one, we want to accomplish obviously, but that we can accomplish. So I think that's a big deal, that 365 days later, we're still, we've still got that as the target. MTSS, maintenance, expansion, and improvement, the, the beauty of leadership that puts great people in important positions and then gets out of their way. I'm a good, I'm really good at getting out of good people's way. And the MTSS folks at the high school are, and I know that Greg has said things similar about the support team that he has at the high school, or the middle school, have just, really they are in my office saying, what do you think if we did this differently? What do you think if we had a person doing this? How about, and, and really my role in that process has been about saying, well, let's try it. Because we've got people who, at the end of the day, want to build relationships and want to help kids. And so that piece, I, I cannot understate the significance of, of what that support mechanism, RTI at the elementary and MTSS at the secondary has done in terms of kind of really shaping what I believe we're capable of as a school district and then our building specifically. And then connecting with students. We've, we've always tried connecting with students. I think that what, this year feels a little bit different in this regard, and I think a key component of that, I would contribute back to Dr. Hillman at his opening address to the staff, and, and really the, the one takeaway was building relationships. And so staff went back to their individual buildings and, and I think heard that message loud and clearly and said, well, what can I do individually in my classroom, collectively as a, as a, as a teaching staff, in, in all of our various roles? How can we work to build relationships? Because we all know the data says, and that then leads us down the road of, of academic success for, for students. Just came from a National Merit reception where one of the most influential teachers that a student identified from all of their schooling was a, was an athletic coach, someone they hadn't even had in the instructional environment in a classroom setting. And it just, it really says what we can do in, in all aspects of what we do in, in our school system if we make those connections with kids. So to me, those are the, kind of the three takeaways as we move forward with this process. So in review, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about one and three together, and I think it will, if it doesn't already make logical sense to you, it will. Last year, we talked about, we, we set the goal, working toward 100% passing rate of 96% of all NHS students, and then 85% of those students being serviced in the MTSS model. So students being identified as those that are needing support. So at, at the point at which they're identified for MTSS, they've demonstrated that, that they're not passing at least one course and fit a series of, of criteria. And so our goal was 96, and we, we reached 95. And I'll show you a grid of the, the continuum of the last few years in a moment here, but we were shooting for 96, hit 95. You'll notice that, that goal number three, and I'm going to get to something that Dr. Hillman pointed out as he reviewed the progress report and the plan here in a moment. But, but we're, while we missed it by a percent, we're again excited enough to say, we, we believe it's possible, and that, that I see this last 5% as a means of, of fine tuning the instrument that's going to get us there. We have to remind ourselves too, as a staff, that we're, you know, this is a pretty high expectation. The principal at, at Mayo High School and I were talking about a, a number of different things, and I mentioned this as our improvement goal, and said, we were at 95, and we were, you know, we're working toward 100%. And he said, geez, Lear. And that was all, you know, it was just like, you've got to be kidding me. What kind of goal is that? And the beautiful thing about it is that you cannot walk this building on any given day where the teachers don't believe it, that, and it's going to take work, and it's going to take hard work, and it's going to take one-to-one relationships in academic settings as well as, as personal and social. But, but to a person, every teacher in this building believes that. Goal number two is the three keys climate goal, and this is where Greg's, I forget what it is, it's not plagiarism, that's the ultimate form of flattery, I'm losing my proverb, but we are not proud enough to suggest that we won't be copycats when it makes sense. And we've, you know, worked with the PBIS model as, as Greg has shared with you, they've done at the middle school. But just really, this, the climate goal piece, the way we had it structured just didn't fit with our student population and kind of the, the philosophical approach that they come to this building with every day. And so we went back to the drawing board and I, by, by saying we, the PBIS team, and said, what would be a, a thing that could get, you know, a large group of students on board right away? You know, let's just say, for example, the ninth graders, and they already knew the language, and so we, you know, wow, we could copy the middle school. And I say that in a, a little bit of a facetious way, but really took their idea of pride and said, well, if they're coming in and we've got suddenly a quarter of the students that know the language, know the expectations, know the system, why wouldn't we? And so, and I'm trying to remember, did we ask permission?
Kind.
Kind. We took it anyway. But that's been really big for us because we, we really, like I said, immediately had this connection to a quarter of our students, and, and that obviously will just grow exponentially over the, the coming years. And, and so we've built around this notion of Raider, Raider Nation, Raider Nation Pride, and, and they're using the same acronym that, that the middle school has done. So we, we appreciate that they laid the groundwork for that. So in a sense, we've abandoned the, the goal that, that is being reported on for progress, but we're really excited kind of about this rebirth of the, the idea moving forward. So here's the, the chart that I was talking about. So if you remember last year, we were right up on 93% for our 912 passing rate. And so while we, we are, we were shooting this year for the 96%, 95%, we really feel keeps us in that, that boat moving toward that ultimate goal of having all of our students pass all of their classes for the academic year. So takeaways from, from the last year, and the power of one-to-one, I realize that can be a confusing message here with our iPads, and those are powerful, but this means one-to-one relationships. And we, we talked a lot in the MTSS model to say, a lot of publicity has been built around our Torch, Torch program. What is make, what is making Torch so effective over the years? And it's one-to-one connections. And I mean academic connections, that you're getting kids exactly what they need in a one-to-one setting. Now, one-to-one settings can be expensive, so we've had to be a little creative with how we approach that, but we're, I, I think we're doing some pretty cool things, and by the grace of, of our community, have access to a number of, of higher ed students and other, other folks who, in some cases for pennies on the dollar, in some cases not even for that, are able to provide some, some pretty great tutorials, a great tutoring and, and instruction for our kids that, that gets them over the hump in a lot of cases. We've talked about the student academic coaches. Carrie Duba shared kind of that information last year, just a kind of a raging success, and that continues on this year. We also have a gentleman, we just call him Greg, and Greg is a Promise Fellow who is, in the, the student academic coaching room seven hours a day. So a facilitator, a mentor, a guide, an instructor, who is, has just been an incredible help in terms of that relationship building that I talked about with, that Dr. Hillman emphasized on the first day of our, of our school year. To the point where Greg has these things called Lunch with Greg, and so students at any given time can come to the room, have lunch with him, talk about whatever, but we've got someone literally that's, that's got their finger on the pulse of everything that is related back to that MTSS program. Staff buy-in, and by, by that, I mean, we have these two paths that students, that we're using for students to be successful. Our, our normal path, for lack of a better word, where a lot of kids are getting a lot of great instruction and they're succeeding in everything they do. And, and that hasn't really changed. But, but a similar, a parallel path with the MTSS support system is, is always going to be kind of seen as this, well, what's this new, this new thing we're doing? You know, kind of over in that room and, or down the hall from us. And it's been fun to watch over the course of the year as teachers say, wow, this really supports what I'm doing in the classroom. This really frees up some opportunity to do some other things. And we've had programs like that. The Ninth Grade Academy, I think, did that same thing for our, for our entire collective population here. And so we're, we're, you know, we continue to be excited about that piece. Focus PLCs, and, and I'm going to jump over that one and come to it when we talk about our goals for next year, but I will definitely revisit that. And then again, the notion of relationship building. So looking ahead, Dr. Hillman had called me a few days before this presentation, and he said, you know, you have two goals that are basically the same goal. And he was exactly right, and that's done purposefully. And here's the reason, is that goal one and three both speak to the notion of that 96% passing rate. But one is really from the vantage point of great instruction, great classroom instruction that the students are getting in their classroom every day, and that's goal number three. And that great instruction, instruction is informed by and developed in those PLCs. So we really wanted to make sure we distinguished kind of the notion of what teachers are doing on a daily basis in their classrooms and in their PLCs, working toward that passing rate, and also what we are doing for students who, who struggle and need that, as, as Dr. Lewis used to say, that extra scoop from the MTSS program. So very purposeful in separating those two. We realized we could write them as, as separate action items under the same goal, but felt it was worth, worth our time to separate those two pieces out. And then goal number two speaks specifically to that climate piece functioning around Raider Nation Pride. And, and a question that we asked in the survey here in, in September was the question about how connected you feel to your high school. And it's a Likert scale. And so when we surveyed them in May, we'd like that number to be 80%, and, and we're, you know, initially kind of concerned that, you know, almost one in three students are, are hesitant about, you know, just how connected they are to the school. And I think that, that what we're doing with PBIS and some other pieces of relationship building, some intentional things that are happening in our building are, are going to get us there. So we look forward to seeing the results of that as well. And then how do we get there? Continue to, to function at a high level with our MTSS. They are reviewing things weekly, bi-weekly, monthly. Every time I turn, turn around, I'm covering for something so that the MTSS team can meet, and I couldn't be happier about that. Because they are really taking and digesting the data to make sure they're making informed decisions. We're going to continue to talk to kids. We've, we've done that in the past. I think that the, and this is going to sound maybe a little bit ridiculous, but, but the gap between gathering the data and using the data in a really informed way is maybe something that we've missed the boat on a little bit, and so we're going to, to recommit to that piece. And then the pride initiative, we, you may be aware that local community members donated the funds along with our student council to purchase Raider Nation t-shirts for, for all of our students in the student body. And so, you know, we look to have, you know, connections to that Raider Nation theme throughout the year, and at any given day, you can see, you know, between 30 and 150 students with that, that t-shirt on. So just that visual alone is kind of a, a positive for us. And then PLC goal-setting and monitoring, continuing to do what, what great instructors do, and that's talk to one another, let that inform instruction, then go back to the classroom and do great things for kids. And so we're looking forward to another great year here, and it's off- And so, we're looking forward to another great year here and it's off to a really good start.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Noel?
Positive report with enough goals for next year.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Other comments, questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Rob?
Hi, Rob. Okay, this is gonna be a dumb question probably. When you talk about percentage, like ninety-six percent passing rate, you have four years in your building, but each year, one moves on and you get a new one. So, how do you kind of institutionalize this so that it doesn't depend on the groups of students, but it depends on just what's going on in the school?
Oh, great question. Really, and I say that sincerely because I think it, I will illustrate it this way. One of the amazing features, and I've talked with some of you about this, when you can reduce the number of students who are unsuccessful in a class or more, down to a number like the one we have, things begin to float to the surface about that cluster of students. And so, where, and really, I almost, what I heard, and this may be wrong, Rob, but what I heard is, how do we adjust for different groups of kids? And the language that you used is, I would use back to you very intentionally. And it is about what we do. How do we respond? And so, I think that what part of the MTSS process is forcing us to do, is get to know kids as individuals, but also as clusters. So, if we can draw some, I'm gonna make up analogies on the spot here and that's always a dangerous thing, but if we can draw a circle around a group of students and say, well, what we have learned from these learners is that these are some things that we need to do in terms of instructional strategies to reach this group. Because what we have seen, as that number has gotten smaller, we have seen some patterns that of that five percent of students who are still struggling, we can draw some parallels from student to student to student. Not for the whole five percent necessarily, but we can get them in clusters and say, okay, what can we find out? What can we read? What can we learn from the research about students who, it might be a particular background, might be language acquisition, it might be learning style? And we really see an opportunity on a couple of levels. One, to be more familiar with the research around instruction and to say, what are other schools? And what does the research say about how to work with learners? How do we need to change to meet those learners in every avenue from which they come? And then also, and this is really in its infancy, but it's kind of exciting, to begin talking about, you know, learning from Greg's staff and from the staffs at the elementary schools and see if we can't draw some predictables in terms of looking at our student population that may be struggling. And then, look retroactively to kind of turn back time a little bit and say, what were the things that this particular group of students was experiencing or demonstrating at the elementary levels and now, how can we change and respond in a way? And each time we do that, I think getting back to your question, each time we do that, we get smarter about being proactive. And to a certain extent, once we build that body of proactive, this kind of sounded funny to say proactive responses, but proactive behavior as instructors. Carrie Duba's, you know, one of my favorite things that she has ever said was, you know, if you use these support strategies with students who don't need them, they won't be harmed. You won't harm a student by using a support strategy if they don't need it. And so, put them all in play, you know? So, we really see this as a means of gaining these support strategies by understanding the research and talking to people and finding out what students need so that we know how to change. And once we change, then it's kind of almost a flipping of a switch rather than kind of scratching our head and saying, well, what do we need to learn? That we've learned all of those pieces and really becoming, you know, critical thinkers as instructors and knowing how to respond to all of those groups of kids.
Great. Thanks for an answer that made my question sound smarter.
And short too, based on my answer.
I'm gonna make it sound dumber again. Do you find that the passing rate is a noisy signal depending on the incoming cohort or is it relative, like, are there five percent of kids on the bubble every year and is that reasonably consistent or is it fairly variable?
It is, it has been consistently shrinking. So, if you remember that in the genesis of our Ninth Grade Academy program, when we looked specifically at the Ninth Grade cohort, we were concerned and it was one in four students in Ninth Grade alone. And so, as that model was implemented, we learned some things about Ninth Grade and the support system that could be in place. And one of the, you know, and this was great, one of the comments coming out of the parent community from our, you know, our initial years of the academy was, why don't you do this for the tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders? And our response back was, well, we would like to. It's costly in some degree and so, it's not an unlimited model of support. And so, I talked about being creative, but I think it, I wouldn't say it's necessarily creative as much as it's people thinking critically about, you know, if you remember Apollo 13, how do we put this into this using only this? And I think that our staff, both in terms of the instructional staff as well as the support staff have said, alright, so we can't do the academy model for four years, so what do we do instead? Had you, I mean, there's no way I could have predicted what we're doing then for, you know, the tenth or twelfth graders. But, I think that that number has leveled off because kind of to Rob's question, we've learned some things. So, we're proactive with those things that are preventing kind of what the pitfalls were initially. And so, we really are doing this, you know, these kind of fine-tuning pieces, but at the same time, exploring things that we've, I don't wanna say we've never thought of before, but we're able to draw some conclusions about students because we are able to access more and more data. We're still, as a building, in a relative infancy in terms of really using data to inform our instruction and to inform our decision-making. And it's still something that we're all getting used to, but it's exciting because it's, you know, we can see that we can draw some conclusions and make some changes that will be long-term solutions that where we don't have to keep going back and saying, okay, this group has fifty-three percent boys. Now, what do we do? You know, that we can do some things that are gonna support all learners no matter what.
Other questions or comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for your report. I liked the theme buy-in. I mean, it's almost like an academic cheer for everybody to kind of just move forward. I don't, I mean, I went to school here neons ago and I don't, you know, I mean, it was all about sports and nothing really about academics as far as that, but I mean, I mean as far as that kind of theme as a school, you just kind of did your own thing and showed up for your sporting events and call it a day. But, you know, I think that the nice part about that too is, is just to make sure, you know, that five percent or whatever it is, that a lot of that can go back and just to, you know, that whole idea of peer-to-peer working together and pulling everybody up, this is a great idea. I love the t-shirts back too, so it's pretty nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Excellent. Doc, do you have any comments?
I just wanna celebrate, I wanna celebrate a key part of this plan. It's gonna seem a little different, but I wanna celebrate the fact that we abandoned a goal. For the high school team to take a look at it and say, you know what, we had an effort with the Three Keys approach. We recognized that there were, it was a good plan, but it did not work as we had thought or we found that there was a better way to do it. And to have the confidence in yourself as a building leadership team to say, alright, we worked this last year on a goal, but we're gonna get rid of it, I really believe shows maturity and really good actually data-informed decision-making. And I think that also looking at the, they looked at what alignment can we have with our feeder school? Is there anything better than alignment? It's wonderful. And so, I just really wanna compliment Joel and the team that developed the plan for having the courage to say, okay, we're abandoning the school. Because I think a lot of times, people's pride gets in the way, not the pride that they're talking about. I didn't even mean to do that.
Well, sort of did get annoyed. No, just kidding.
But, I think that's, again, it's kind of a broken record of the last piece. This is exactly the kind of thing we want to say, okay, this did not work. What can we look at? How can we share? We talk a lot about this in DPAC and in Northfield Promise about how can we replicate best practice. Tonight's presentations are a perfect example of that. So, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much. Good work. Okay. So, we're moving through the agenda here. So, our next item for discussion is strategic planning, vision statement and priorities. Dr. Hillman.
Well, good evening. I'm here to talk with you this evening about trying to wrap up our strategic planning process. And the purpose of the presentation is to review the planning process and provide a draft of some of the final outcomes for the board's potential consideration on October 24th. So, just to remind you about the process, we started this on August 8th and we completed it on September 22nd. At the end of the day, we had a hundred and eighty-six total participants. And at the beginning of your pack, you have a little narrative that I shared and it shows you the number of participants that we had per stakeholder group, ranging from thirteen with the district youth council, of ours Ripley is here tonight and he participated in that process, to eighty-nine staff members who participated in five different sessions during a professional development day during workshop week. And we also included people whose language is not English as their first language. We had a wonderful session at the Greenville Park Community School where we used interpreters to seek the feedback of our second language families, which we're really proud to have their input as part of our strategic plan. How did we do it? We used the Big River Group with Dr. Bruce Miles, who is at least entertaining if not engaging, as many of you have found out. We worked in something really focused on two pieces. One is the vision. So, five years from now, what do we want our school to be, our school district to be recognized and known for? Then, we also worked on what are the near-term priorities? So, if the vision is the destination, what are the near-term priorities that we can generate to be able to get us on track to that destination? You know, those hundred and eighty-six people worked in small groups and they reported out. And then, we also used a power voting strategy where through multiple rounds, people who participated had an opportunity, have three little blue dots and they could vote on what were the statements in the vision and the near-term priorities that were the most important to them. This is one of the more effective processes that I've ever seen and have used it a number of times to really bubble the best ideas to the top and also to put people in a safe but slightly uncomfortable situation, have to make some choices. Because on any given day, we have a number of things that we could choose to focus on. But, an important part of an effective organization is to know what the destination is so that we are always on the right track. Have you heard our school improvement plans this evening? Very clear vision about what they want. At the high school, very clear about the passing rate. At the middle school, very clear about building relationships through the pride piece because that's so important at the middle school. So, at a district level, how can we create that level of focus to get district-level work done? So, I wanna share with you here the vision points that were brought forward. In your packet, what you have is you do have a copy of those vision points. These were the final pieces that the board administration collated after all of the other groups had provided their input and feedback. And there were six different points that we brought forward. One of the first points of the vision points that were brought forward was that we wanna have, we wanna be recognized for a robust curriculum that addresses all students' academic and social needs. And I think that that plays right into the school improvement plans that we heard this evening. We want curriculum that really addresses every child's needs, no matter where they are on the learning continuum and their journey towards success. We wanna make sure that we're preparing all students with a strong foundation for their post-high school path, both career and college-ready. Makes sense. We want kids to be prepared to embrace their future and have the confidence and the skills to meet it head-on. The third vision point for the school district is financial sustainability and stewardship. One of the important things is having consistency. And when we can have consistency in our programming, you can see the wonderful things that our buildings can do when they have a reasonable expectation of what is coming down the line. And financial sustainability and stewardship is very critical in that effort. We want a district staff that reflects community demographics. We wanna make sure that our students see themselves in our staff. We think that that's a very important piece and these hundred and eighty-six people who helped bubble these to the top felt so as well. We wanna make sure we have appropriate class sizes for all abilities, ages and subjects. And when we talk about class size, you'll see a couple of different terms. You'll see appropriate and reasonable. And part of it is because with class size, there are certain trade-offs that we have to have some discussion about in terms of some class-sized trade-offs that made the Ninth Grade Academy possible, some class-sized trade-offs that made MTSS possible. Class size across the board in equal format is not fair. And so, we felt we really need to have a vision of what are appropriate class sizes for all abilities, age levels and subjects. That was a key part of the vision points. And finally, the last vision point is equitable opportunities for all. So, equitable opportunities can mean a number of different pieces, but making sure that all students have equitable access to the wonderful opportunities that are available here in the Northfield Public Schools is something that we felt was very important or this hundred and eighty-six people felt was very important. So, from that point, what we did was those vision points, if you were to look at those six vision points and try to imagine writing a sentence with all of those points in it, we would have an incredibly long run-on sentence that DPAC would have taken several weeks to try to pare down. So, our administrative team was charged with how can we construct a vision statement that's accessible, that also honors all of those vision points? And so, our entire administrative team spent about seventy-five minutes at one of our semi-monthly meetings and we worked in a common Google Doc, which was very interesting to see all of that activity happening on the fly. And this is what we developed. We will prepare every student for lifelong success within a world-class learning environment committed to community partnerships and sustainability. Now, when we look at that, I wanna just point out, we, in your packet, I also provided a, what I call a mapping exercise. So, with those six different vision points, how did we get there? So, when you look at that first piece here, I'm gonna zoom just out just a tad, I broke the vision statement clause into three segments and then I mapped them on the right-hand side to the vision points that were bubbled to the top by the hundred and eighty-six people and confirmed by the school board and the administration in a work session on September 22nd. So, when we talk about we will prepare every student for lifelong success, we believe that that maps with a robust curriculum that addresses all students' academic and social emotional needs and preparing all students with a strong foundation for their post-high school career path. When we talk about within a world-class learning environment, we believe that that's maps to the equitable opportunities, the appropriate class size. It also maps with a robust curriculum and also with a district staff that reflects community demographics. Those are the things that we synthesize to say, that's from the vision points what a world-class learning environment means. And finally, committed to community partnerships and sustainability, we map that to district staff that reflects community demographics, financial sustainability and stewardship, equitable opportunities for all students, preparing students for strong foundation for their post-high school career path. Now, community partnerships was never part of any of those vision statements that you saw. However, they were inherent in every single one of them. We have strong community partnerships that go to all of these different areas. And we really debated this for a period of time. How could we talk about this? How could we add something that didn't necessarily explicitly, was not explicitly stated during the visioning component? Now, if you paid attention, you, community partnerships came up over and over again. And as we broke down the six final vision points, none of those vision points are possible without our community. And so, our determination at the end to include that community partnerships piece was a reflection of how you could not separate the two. And so, we submit that for your consideration as the way that we broke down those statements and brought them into a single vision statement. So, I'm gonna move on to the near-term priorities and we'll come back for questions at the end. So, what were the near-term priorities that people bubbled to the top? Building and fostering relationships, commitment to social-emotional. And the focus on that is the fact that we are looking at what you heard tonight in our school improvement plan presentations and knowing that, we use a strategy in elementary schools called responsive classroom. And responsive classroom, I would articulate as a pre-social, a pre-curriculum for social-emotional learning. I'm not sure it's a strong core curriculum, but it's certainly a really good start. And when you're trained in using responsive classroom, you basically have to commit to saying that the social and the emotional is as important as the academic. I'm a big believer in the work of Abraham Maslow. And what Abraham Maslow says is, until people have some security at the base of his pyramid, we cannot self-actualize, we cannot get the higher-order thinking or do the wonderful things that we hear in our school improvement plans. And so, committing to this, building and fostering relationships is essential to all of the other things that we believe we can accomplish. The second near-term priority was developing a long-term solution that allows for reasonable class sizes while maintaining financial stability. And that can be a trick. So, we need to have a strong discussion about what does reasonable class sizes mean at various grade levels and various disciplines for various ages and abilities? But, that's a near-term priority that directly maps to one of the vision points. Also looking at, we need spaces that are modern, innovative, creative and flexible. To respond to the needs of learners and be proactive to their needs, we may need to consider how we use space differently. And this was a key vision point, or, excuse me, a key near-term priority that was brought forth by the hundred and eighty-six folks who participated in the process and bubbled to the top by the board administration. that was brought forth by the 186 folks who participated in the process and bubbled to the top by the board administration. Equitable opportunities and support for all on college and career paths. This is another piece that's really important because of the fact that we want to make sure that all kids know that we will support and honor and respect and help them in any way that we can, regardless of what career or post-high school pathway that they choose. If they choose a highly selective four-year college, great. We also want people to know that a two-year technical college is an excellent career pathway that we completely support them on. If they choose the military or some other volunteer service, as a school, we want to make sure kids know that we care about them and we support the choices that they're making for their post-high school career. And we have to be honest, this is a place that we've struggled because I think there's a lot of pressure on our high school kids, specifically around that highly selective four-year college. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's the perfect choice for lots of kids. But it's not the perfect choice for every kid and kids shouldn't feel less than because they have chosen something other than what has become that cultural norm to a certain extent. And the only way I know how to address that is by first talking about it. And it doesn't mean that what we've, how we've done before is as bad, just saying as we move forward, how can we make sure that every kid can say, you know what? That's what I really want to do. That's what I'm passionate about. That's what sparks me and how we can move forward. We want to prioritize recruiting and retaining a diverse staff, making sure that our staff reflects our students and making sure that our students see themselves in our staff. And one of the key pieces with all this is robust core subject instruction. And so that's another near-term priority, ensuring that our core subject instruction is robust. Interesting with this, a few of the things that came through in the action plans, the beginning, the primitive action plans that you have in your packet, is defining what is robust and what is core. And in the late 1890s, some professors from the Great Northeast determined that we had four core subjects. And the question in 2016, are those four core subjects the same that should be what we consider to be core today? I don't have the answer to that, but we have an action team that's going to start looking into that. So I just want to point out that each of these near-term priorities, in your packet, you have a copy of the beginning benchmarks. And what we did is we actually gave you exactly what was, for the most part, exactly what was written down by the action, or the teams on the September 22nd. And some of these are a little bit primitive to start and that's okay, because that's the starting point. A benchmark sheet is designed to rally action around it over the period of time. That's the purpose of a strategic plan. The title slide is a little tongue-in-cheek that we have a strategic plan to get things done. And that's what these action plans or these benchmark sheets are about. And what we, my favorite part of this is the third part, which is, what should we see happening in 30 to 60 days? So often strategic plans get mired in sitting on a shelf and we'll get to that next year. Oh, that was great. Remember when we did that fun activity with Dr. Miles? That was wonderful. What I like about the benchmark sheets is even though they start off this way, they continue to evolve and grow as we put resources toward them. And we are committed that we're going to have some results within 30 to 60 days or at least see some progress within 30 to 60 days. So what are our next steps with the strategic planning process? Because again, you know my criticism of traditional strategic planning, which is we spend months and months and months admiring the problem and not getting anything done. So my hope is that you'll consider adopting the strategic plan vision and these particular components on October 24th. Then what we would do is widely share the updated vision and near-term priorities. I plan to use a strategy that we've learned from Northfield Promise and some others to do a short video that really explains and articulates the passion behind the strategic plan vision and these six different areas that we're looking at, sharing it widely. Whether that mean that I'm going to PTOs and sharing that or talking with staff in faculty meetings, whether it be going to PLCs or whatever it takes to get the word out that this is, we have shared vision here because 186 different people had a hand in making this. And so it's not just the school board's vision, it's our vision. And that is so important transitioning to action. And then of course, the next piece is to move forward in developing action teams for near-term priorities. So administrators who are on those, who finalize these near-term points, will be also recruiting staff members to participate in these teams. We'll be looking at other places within the district where some of this work has already started and trying to align and collate and making sure that we are all working together and actually rowing ahead in the same direction. So those are those key next steps that we'll do. And then I have time for questions. So what I hope I frame for you here tonight is the fact that we started this back on August 8th. We started with some big-picture thinking. We involved a whole lot of people in terms of getting their opinions. We then, as a board administration, bubbled them to the top. As an administration, we refined the vision points into what I think is a very memorable vision statement. And then finally, we've developed some pieces that action teams can really grasp and hold on to and actually have some potential results. It's almost a school improvement plan at the district level to a certain extent. I'd like to make one additional point here. And the fact that in your packet with that document that I had brought up on the screen here, let's bring it up again. You'll notice that we included a couple of things from our previous plan. And what I, our previous strategic plan was something that lasted for more than a decade. And I think it, coincidentally, it really aligns nearly perfectly with what we develop now with just a little bit more shape and a little bit more substance. So the mission, which is the things that we're doing every day to achieve the vision, we left exactly the same except for I submit to you one executive suggestion, which is changing the word, which used to be participate in our dynamic world, to engage in our dynamic world. We don't want just people who are passive. We want people to engage in dynamic world. And then we've also maintained the beliefs and strategies because I think those are things that people are familiar with. And it does not harm, it's the Carrie Duba reference that Joel made before. It does no harm to leave those strategies and beliefs as part of the strategic plan as a reminder of where we've been. But it also helps provide a springboard and some more support for where we're going. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions that you have at this time. Again, this is a draft piece and the intent is for you to get some questions out, for you to give me some direction in terms of if there are things that you would like to look at differently between now and the 24th. And then what I hope is that we'll be able to submit it for your review and approval on the 24th and we can get going henceforth.
Okay, excellent. So, time for some good discussion? So questions, comments?
Ellen. So I have two areas of this, okay?
Yeah.
One is on the vision statement and the other is on the near-term priorities. And so the vision statement, the one word that I got kind of hung up on was sustainability. And that's probably, sorry, it's sustainability. And that's because I can see that being environmental versus financial. And so rather than getting hung up on the word that, you know, gave me pause, I wondered if there's a way we can get some sort of face validity? Because I love this, the idea of the statement and the mapping. And we were all in the room to develop this, so I feel like we're not necessarily the right readers to have that sort of face validity. But, so I'd be curious about that. And then the other question I have is on the near-term priorities. If we have six really meaty ones, is that, I mean, I know we developed this. I really like all of them, but I'm questioning the number with burnout versus buy-in. So I guess those are on two different areas.
Well, on the face validity, I think you raised a very good point. And coincidentally, I, we toyed with some pieces around financial sustainability. In an effort to be succinct, we landed on sustainability. We can certainly go back and take a look at that again. I would submit that if people take it as sustainability in terms of environmental or those kinds of pieces, that also is a financial sustainability for us. If people start turning off lights to be environmentally sustainable, that helps us with our electricity bills. We've been working with some students to try to really provide a better way to teach kids to recycle their food in the cafeteria and the appropriate composting and things like that. While that's being sustainable, it's also a positive thing for the school district from a number of different perspectives. So I would question, or I would just ask back that if people were to take it either way, I'm not sure it's the end of the day. But I think it'd be very interesting for me just to ask some people on the street, basically, if I take it and say, tell me what this means to you. Because I think that's what you're asking, correct Ellen? I will certainly do that because that's going to be fun. I get the, that'll be a great thing to do tomorrow. And so I will certainly hand that to folks and say, tell me what this means to you. Because I think that that's an important way for us to gauge, how will people read into it? I intend for us to frame what it means as far as loud and wide as we possibly can. But we also know as people move into the district, we have new staff members come in. While we'll try to make sure that we articulate the vision to everyone, people are going to also read it on their own. We want to make sure it's readable for everyone and they can take it to, or for themselves and get something of what we thought was important. On the second part, say your second question, oh, but the number of priorities, yes. You know, that is a good, that's a good question. And I think as a board, you certainly have the right to talk with us about, we could do this in multiple phases. The truth is, a strategic plan, remember, it's five years. So the fact is, we could choose to focus on a handful of these pieces right away and get some momentum moving and then have a second phase of the goals or of those near-term priorities. Because the near-term priorities that get us to the vision within five years. Near-term priorities are typically a year or so. And so there'd be nothing wrong with us really aggressively attacking a handful of those near-term priorities with an intentional plan to say, you know, these, for example, let's just take the recruiting and retaining diverse staff. That really kicks up for us probably in January, as you think about when we start thinking about staffing for the next year. Now, there are things that that team, you know, could do now in order to look at it, to begin preparing. In addition, we have a relatively large group of people who can engage in this. And so I'm not sure it's necessarily about having six priorities that one person's going to be working on. I look at myself as the coach or the facilitator of these, certainly will be involved. But at the same time, recruiting other people to really be doing the work in terms of those things. So it will depend upon, we would try not to have people cross over on teams. We would say, you know, this is our action team to work on this. And so we may be able to break that down in an economy of scale simply by inviting more people to participate.
Normally, I wouldn't be asking a question as a chair, but I think it sort of dovetails off what Ellen had asked. So one of my questions was, is how do we, you know, leverage the work being done, for example, Northfield Promise Career and College Readyness Action Team, which is doing a great amount of work right now and is fully represented by administrators and teachers, other staff members? So how would you see, you know, in terms of the, you know, the amount of work that has to be done in terms of near-term priorities, where you see us leveraging some of the work? And you alluded to that, but how would you see that working in specifically even like the CTE? Because you know the amount of work that they're working on right now. And have, you know, action plans and specific dates and that. So how would we sort of leverage that work?
What's really energizing, I think, about our strategic plan as it rests here tonight in draft format is I'm not sure we could have planned it any better in terms of how it aligns with some of the other groups in the community. One of the things I really appreciate about Northfield Promise is the fact that the analogy of making sure that all of our arrows are headed in the right direction and this could not fit better with that. So how I would envision something like that, for example, that career and college ready component, we have a number of people who are already on that Northfield Promise Committee. And so leveraging those folks around that committee then to saying, how can we really realize our part of this? Because if you think about the Northfield Promise goals, they're community-wide. The school is an important player in it. But really, we actually already have an action team surrounded by, around that particular part and they're already doing the work. We don't need to recreate the wheel. We don't need to create a shadow team. Exactly what you're saying, Julie, we're going to leverage the folks who are, who are already doing this work so that we can have, get benefit for both goals. Because the fact is, Northfield Promise's goal is a community-wide goal. Ours is specific to the school's role in that goal. And so that's exactly how I see leveraging it. We may even have some action teams that are truly already completely formed. And that would be awesome because that is, that's good alignment as well. There's no need to recreate the wheel.
Yes, I mean, I'm part of the Career and College Readyness Action Team and I think that with the amount of work they're doing and the subcommittee work, I think that is really close to really being formed. So, excellent.
And that's one thing that we, that's one last thing that we have to really start work on because it really is already there. In fact, you think about the robust curriculum piece. Again, this was not something, this was not dictated, you know, no administrator said this is what our, this was bubbled to the top by 186 people. But you remember not too long ago, Mary Hansen, our Director of Teaching and Learning, was at the same podium talking about how we need to look at our, how we need to look at our curriculum review process and how we can make it more modern and more responsive. Well, and we said, we're already going to look at that, fits right in with the robust core curriculum. What does that mean? That's got to be part of our curriculum review process. So I think we're really in a good position and actually it's very affirming for these people who have come to all of these different sessions to say, really, we're on the right track. What I like about the benchmarking is we actually have some things written down that we're going to say we're going to see in 30 to 60 days. It's not a hope, you know, because as much as I'm a hopeful person, hope is not a strategy. You know, these pieces are strategies that we can use to move that needle forward.
Okay, excellent. Other questions, comments?
I just want to publicly thank all 186 people, the translators, the interpreters, the other folks who came, our board members who attended so much. And if you really think back, in less than two months, today is October 10th, you know, about two months, how much work we've gotten done, it truly is amazing. And we are trying to leverage the, the interestingly named chainsaw planning model. How can we leverage that more within our system to move from problem admiration to problem solving as quickly as we possibly can? So thank you to everyone who participated.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Were you wrapping up?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, so I wanted, I had, I had a couple of other questions. I too wanted to comment about the sustainability. Because, you know, it took me a while to look at that as well. But then I was thinking about when we talk about sustaining programs like community school. You know, when that funding runs out, how are we going to sustain that program? How are we going to sustain MTSS, ninth grade academy, you know, those sort of things? But I think to look at that word, I think is a really good idea. Secondly, I wasn't, I've been struggling a little bit with the committed to community partnerships and then not, and then, and having that caveat there and not having it sort of as really a vision. In addition to the 186 people, we also took into account Thought Exchange.
This is very true.
And that was a lot of really good input. And I know as a board, we really took a lot, took to heart a lot of the comments that we got from Thought Exchange. And the great thing there too, obviously, is talking about the alignment we saw with that 186 people. But that'd be over 1,000 people who gave us their comments. There was a lot of alignment there which helped us really move forward and feel confident. So I'm just wondering if, if we feel like the committed to community partnerships, which we heard over and over again and we understand is really, is really critical. Not only, you know, community partnerships to me also means our families. And it also means, you know, the communication aspect and the connectedness we have with our community, including, you know, our number of community groups, the business and our families. So I wasn't sure how we would do that or if we need to do that. But, but I struggled a little bit with that and I don't know I would be interested in.
Julie, just so I'm clear, you struggled with the caveat that we wrote or?
Yeah, instead of having it as, as something specific. I was looking at some other school districts and what they had said and similar. Something like, "Community members will be informed, connected, and engaged in the work of the Northfield School District." I mean, is there, is there, should we have a specific vision development mapping there that talks, that references back to community partnerships? Or do we feel like what we're seeing? I guess I'm saying we don't directly address it and is that amiss? And so I would be really curious what, what your thoughts are and other board members, how they feel about that.
I think, I really appreciate you bringing forward the fact that Thought Exchange also informed our thinking. And just so I can go back to the purpose of the mapping, is that if, you know, if you think about the integrity of the process, we all were in that room that evening when we saw, in the final session, you know, where we saw where the votes came down. And, you know, so I wanted to make sure that we, if someone went back to that, that they could look and directly map it and that we didn't necessarily bring in a statement that, you know, was not explicitly stated. When we discussed that as an administrative team, we went back to exactly what you're saying is that none of this is possible, you know, without community partnership. And so while it wasn't explicitly stated, it was part of the DNA of every statement. And so that's why we felt comfortable, actually, we felt it was imperative to bring the community partnerships word forward because it is something that we've heard over and over again. And while in this particular instance, you know, it didn't necessarily rise to the top as an explicit statement, it's a piece that we cannot do the rest of the vision without a community partnership. Now, that being said, if the concern is on the caveat component that we had written just in that vision mapping, that is something we can certainly work on because it is, I think there's plenty of data to point to to say that people have felt community partnership is important. So if it's about the caveat that we wrote, I just, what I didn't want, Julie, is I didn't want someone to look and see the sheet with the, you know, the vision points and their voting and say, well, how did you come up with that? I wanted to share that here was the thinking behind it. But that's why it's a draft, you know what I mean? So we can share with you what our thinking is and we can certainly rework that part and remove the caveat. So we can share with you what our thinking is, and we can certainly rework that part and remove the caveat, and really emphasize where that piece of, the statement came from, from data.
Fritz?
This is either a process question or a leading question. I'm not sure which. As far as the near-term priorities go, is it your intention? Or if not, does it sound like a good idea or a terrible idea if, for each near-term priority, we actually put names against it? Or there will be an action team who will report out in six weeks to make sure that there's, for whichever, if we decide to do two in the short term, then two, or six if we do all six, to make it so that it's actually accountable, so that we know that, oh, in six weeks, we'll figure out whether that was actually accomplished?
Absolutely. It's, I believe it's part of the process. When you move from the benchmarks to action, what's going to have to happen is we're going to identify action team leads or co-leads. They're going to develop a team, and again, in some cases, the team is, could already be developed. As Julie mentioned with the CTE team, we really have that developed, and there's no reason to make them do extra work. It's a matter of bringing them in and making them aware of the goal, and then ensuring that they're reporting to us on a regular basis. On some of the other ones, there will be people who would just make sense for their department or for their position to take part of the lead on that, and then to start brainstorming those pieces of what are the, using those initial next steps, and then also providing some reports to us on a fairly regular basis. And we can certainly, in fact, we, we must really report this to you at the board level every several months, because I think that's the key thing of moving the strategic plan from being on the shelf to showing that it's a living, breathing document. That's where we'll have to have some reports on a fairly regular basis.
And does it, do we want to have that stipulated in the October 24th document? Or is that the next thing that happens after that?
Yeah, so I believe, what I, here's just my belief, I believe that as the board, you are approving these pieces, or you'd approve these pieces as the, as the strategic direction and the near-term priorities. And our, us as administrators, it is our job to enact your request. And so, once you tell us that, yes, this is good to go, it is our job to make sure that that is activated and realized, and then reporting to you in a governance fashion.
Great, thanks.
Okay, excellent question. Other questions or comments? Ellen?
So, so what I guess I'm understanding is that they, that you're hoping at the end of October, our second meeting, that we'll adopt this, and then this will, this will be sort of the vision statement and these near-term priorities.
Correct.
And I guess, going back to what Julie was struggling with, I guess, that would be the pieces. I just, I read, I like the vision statement, but I know, I wasn't involved in, in the strategic planning that went into this, but I understand from the people that, that the language, and language always matters a lot.
Yes, it does.
They really, really struggled with the language. And I know that the group that you had probably did this, the same. And I guess, I just, you know, wondering, how will Noel at the end of October? If, if the language, you know, how would we get the space validity? How will we know, you know, is world-class enough for this equitable piece that came through so clearly? Is, is sandwiching the community partnerships and sustainability in the way that it is, it might be perfect. But how, I guess that's the question, is I don't know, on October 24th, if we just, it's a leap of faith? Or, or will, is there some step that we need to know?
Well, I, I do believe whenever we choose to move forward with it, there's always going to be a, a part of it that's a leap of faith, you know, in terms of that, because you're setting something that has to basically redefine itself, you know, during the course of it. So that is a piece that I, I do think, no matter what we do, there's going to be a segment of that. And I think that's just part, that's the final part of the strategic planning process, to say, we believe in this, and we're ready to take the next step. And that being said, I have the list of the 44 people, my email of the people who had come to the community strategic planning session. We have staff right here in the building who we can check into and, and get their feedback on it. There are some pieces that we certainly can get that feedback very quickly for you, Ellen, in terms of having it for the 24th meeting. Is that, would that be helpful?
I have a, I have a, just an ignorance question first, and then, an actual pertinent question. The ignorance question is, I've never heard the phrase "face validity" ever before. Can you explain what that means?
Sure, so that's, the idea is, you know, there's, there's different ways of thinking about, when you're thinking about a survey, is when I've used it before, where you have different ways of making sure the questions are valid, and then there's a different line where you're trying to see if they're reliable. But face validity is that, do the language mean what you think it means to the people that it's going out to? So that's what I guess, and I don't know, I don't know that we want to have this whole another data gathering piece, because that could bring up a whole, I mean, then, then you're asking, then it's, then it's no longer reflecting what we've done. It's reflecting another data gathering. So going, wearing that same hat, I would say that's probably not the way I would think about it, but.
So then, then the pertinent question is, it sounds like you're maybe wishing for either a mini-boardwork session to wordsmith this. I, I figured that, I figured that one or both of these things would make you wince. Either that, or a subcommittee, like a wordsmithing subcommittee. Is, is that what, would those be the sorts of things that would help you feel comfortable with the specific language?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know, and I guess I, I'm not, I don't want to say that I am uncomfortable with this language. I just more, I'm putting it out there. I mean, those are certainly options that the board could look at. Or it could be just that we intentionally say, well, you know, Noel is, has it in his back pocket is the million people that he talks to during the day? And that would be another strategy. I don't think it has, I mean, I think it could, it doesn't have to be this rigorous data gathering piece. Or it could be that we feel like as a board, we need to have a little bit more intentionality. I think there's ways of doing it.
I'm just facing the situation where, as far as language like this goes, I'm a complete satisficer. So I'm, I'm going to get happy very early. But I know from working with you that the two of you are very careful readers, who are very good at figuring out nuance in a way that I'm not. So I'm certainly open to either.
Well, I think the important piece, too, is no matter where we land on at the end, it's, it's behooved upon us to go out and sell this. And so, we need to go out and make sure that people know what it means. And that was part of the mapping strategy, you know, was to say, hey, here's the, here's the data behind this. Here's how we got to where we ended up, and here's what it is, and here's what it means to us. And I think that the more that we share that with people, the more that we articulate it to people. If we are out and talking about it and not letting people make their own meaning for it, but us making the meaning for it, I think that that's where you cross that chasm of, of the leap of faith.
I appreciate all the great discussion. I think that part of what, I think as, as our role as a board is to just move forward and say that we're comfortable with this. And that, like other situations, then the superintendent, administrators, and the staff, you know, are, are going to what they do best. And, and that we've set this 30,000 level, you know, foot-level vision and, and the mapping, and really gone even more detailed than we have before. But I think that based on the work that was done and, and how it came together, that if we're comfortable as a board, that we could move forward with this. I think that there are some nuanced things that, that we've raised that I think definitely merit another look. But I don't, I don't know that it, it means going back to the groups that have done the work prior. I think they felt like, they felt good about where it was and moved forward. And, you know, as a board, this is, this is us. So we can make the changes and adjustments that we feel are warranted. But the work of the group, I think, is, is, is to be really acknowledged. And I, I feel comfortable with the way it's come together, other than maybe a couple of, of reviews of, you brought up the word of sustainability, if that's really the word we want to use.
And we can work on that one. You know, the other one that we used was stewardship, and we went back and forth on it. You know, do we, do we stewardship again, which we've used in the past, or would you use sustainability? But we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, you know, or on Wednesday afternoon, excuse me. We can go back and take a look at that, and we can offer you some alternatives.
So if we were then to, as a board, are we comfortable moving forward with Dr. Hillman looking at sustainability piece? I didn't hear any comments from board members back about the community partnership, if we wanted to be more explicit about that. Does anyone have any thoughts? I felt like there might be opportunity to do that, but I'm comfortable.
And I can retool that a bit to make it less, yeah, I, I think I can retool that part, Julie.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on community partnership piece? Because I, I'm kind of trying to just make sure, I'm not so sure I'm really comfortable with that, but I'd love to get everyone else's thoughts.
You did have a good line there that had "gauge," and had some other three words in it that was pretty good.
"Community members will be informed, connected, and engaged in the work of the Northfield School District."
That's, that's good language.
Julie, to be clear, and you're proposing adding that as a bullet to the mapping? Is that essentially where you were imagining that?
Well, that's kind of where I'm going with it, but I, I want to get other people's thoughts on that, too. Again, just acknowledging that we heard it from so many different people. And I think about, you know, a number, you know, we talk about how critical, you know, we have partnerships to, to really be successful, that, that we can't do it on our own. So, you know, it's implied, but because I think it's so important, and it, that as a board, we could say, we really want to be explicit here about how we say that piece. And, and I get, and I, and I totally respect that that didn't come out directly. But again, just implying, because I think we heard it enough over the number of different stakeholder groups.
Well, and Julie, I think the other thing I can do is I can go back into the thought exchange data, and I can look at one of those pieces that's a higher, so let me take a look in there. I just want to make sure that we map it to, you know, what, you know, was part of the process. But we can, you have the right to alter that process. So if we add that piece from, you know, a component of the thought exchange, we certainly can do that. I just wanted to make sure when we're presenting it to you that you didn't look, oh, wait, where did this come from? And I wanted to explain why it came through that.
No, I do respect that, absolutely. So Ellen, are you comfortable with that, or where are you thinking right now?
Yeah, and, and I think if, if the, if part of the sustainability word is to be a little ambiguous and say that we're, we're also being environmental and we're being financial, I mean, I think that's okay if that's what we're embracing. I just, I wanted to make, I wanted to understand that.
No, I think it was a really excellent comment.
Let me toss this out. Yeah, tell. Personally, I like the word sustainability, but if, if there were three other words you're going to use instead of sustainability, what would they be? I mean, if it's ambiguous or stewardship, you know, it's not, you know, yeah, stewardship sounds more like a church.
It's true.
But, you know, I don't.
But we, we view stewardship, though, as part of the previous mission for years, and have always seen it very seriously.
Sure, so there's other good words on there. Maybe you have five other words that would be a, a different word than sustainability, but I mean, I don't have anything against sustainability.
Fritz?
I actually, I read sustainability as ambiguous, but in a way that I really loved. And I actually took a third meaning from it that nobody has mentioned. So I, I took it to potentially intentionally mean financial, environmental, and also that the decisions that we make, we're intending to make decisions that people can actually continue to do rather than burning themselves out. So in the sense of sustainability that way, that we can sustain the work that we're doing.
And I think a really important point there, Fritz, is, as I've described this to our administrators, this is a measuring stick that we're going to use to look at in making decisions. And so, one of the key things that we should be questioning ourselves is that we don't want to have fads or flash in the pans. We want to have things that we believe are good for kids and that we can do for kids for a reasonably long period of time. And so, the fact is that when, when we come back to it, what sustainability means is that we can have programming that is predictable. We can have programming that we know is reliable, you know, in terms of that it's going to be ongoing. And so, I, I do think that when we get into that particular word, there's a couple of different meanings from it. But how I'm looking at action, making this actionable, is when we have a, a decision before the board and we look at, you know, is this going to promote kids' preparation for long-term success of their career? Is this going to promote a world-class learning environment? And that takes on a number of meanings. Is it going to be something that's good for our community, or can we do it with our community? Because that's so important. We do not, schools no longer operate in isolation. We cannot do this on our own, and we see that over and over again. And then, is what we do sustainable? Is it something that we can have a reasonable thought, that it is ongoing for a period of time? And if we can't answer yes to those questions, then we need to dig one layer deeper and say, okay, what is making us uncomfortable about this? Because there's, there'd nothing, be nothing worse that I would see than us having a great program that we have to cancel after a few years because we didn't have the foresight of the lack of funds or the lack of certified staff, or all of those things. We know what takes place when people lose a program in our district. So we want to make sure that it's something they can have some reasonable understanding, that we're committed to it for the future.
Excellent. I, thank you, Fritz. That was, you saw Ellen and I shaking our heads. And, and I'm really comfortable with sustainability. I mean, I think it's worth looking at, but I think that we look at it in that many, you know, that way. And I think to be able to tell, you know, staff, no, the sustainability, that this isn't, you know, as you said, the flash in the pan, like, oh, now what are we doing? You know, you look at, you know, so many school districts that are constantly talking about new initiatives, and you think, oh, my gosh, I can't imagine being a teacher in that district and thinking, okay, what's the initiative du jour, right?
And there's nothing wrong with new initiatives. In fact, we heard many tonight that are, were extremely successful. And our fear is what happens if the funding runs out, or what happens if we don't have the people to take on a particular program? And I think it's our duty to make sure we have those discussions upfront, to be as thoughtful and as planful as possible. And sometimes we say, we're not sure we can sustain this, but the short-term benefits are so huge that we want to take that risk. That's a, all I'm asking is that we have a vision statement that we can reasonably use as a measuring stick on everyday decisions. Big and small.
Excellent. So, then, board members, any other comments or questions? And certainly, oh, Rob, go ahead.
Sorry, it's taken me a while to.
No, that's all right.
Kind of come up with this. But I, as I was looking at the vision statement clauses and then the vision development mapping, you have, first of all, we will prepare every student for lifelong success. And then, under the vision development mapping for that, you have prepare all students. So you've got the prepare in both places. And then in the bottom, committed-to-community partnerships and sustainability, you have, in the vision mapping, financial sustainability and stewardship. So these things are taken out and seen in both places. One of the things that appears twice is equitable opportunities. But equitable is not sort of taken out and highlighted within the statement. So I'm thinking, I mean, if I were trying to get everything in, something like committed-to-community equity and sustainability or something like that, because that seems to be a piece that's missing from the statement that's very clearly highlighted in the mapping.
And where we attempted to really emphasize that, because you're right, this is, this is where you're taking these very six-wordy vision statements, which are all good, or vision points, and trying to coalesce them into a single. And on this particular piece, it did not come up. But I believe that if you look at, it should be in, when I'm looking at the top of the sheet, actually, if we look up further, you'll see how we emphasize by underlining every. When we, when we think about every, I, I think of equity, one of the pieces of equity is every student. And so, there was an intentional emphasis on every to say that we're going to do this for every child, which means it's equitable, you know, to a cer, that, that was the point of looking at that particular piece. That was a way we felt we could ensure that equity was at the front in the action portion of the statement. Not saying that that part is perfect, but it's a piece that we felt we could really emphasize with the every.
And for what it's worth, every is the word that Northfield Promise uses to signify that, too.
It's almost, we, we, it was almost intentional, yes.
Which doesn't, which doesn't mean that it's perfect, but it's at least consistent, please, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, other comments? Okay, great discussion.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the help.
So then, between now and the 24th, obviously, if board members have other questions or comments, or as you sort of digest the discussion tonight, if there's other things, certainly, we can get to Dr. Hillman prior to October 24th, and then our intent that night will be to approve this.
What I really appreciate is the thoughtful discussion, because when we get into this, again, we're really serious about making this something that is livable and actionable, and words do matter. And making sure that we have it right, I think, is really important. So I really appreciate the thoughtful discussion and the thoughtful comments, because it's going to make us even be more committed to it at the end.
Excellent. Thank you. So, our next item for discussion would be a QCOM update. Will allow Dr. Hillman the opportunity to sit down again? And he will present a QCOM update.
Yes, and our QCOM update this evening is relatively short. So at the last several meetings, Northfield Education Association representative and high school math teacher Ray Kudry has been here, and we've been talking about the QCOM letter of intent, which you authorized at the last meeting. And we've also been talking about the QCOM application. And we know all along that we've been looking at October 15th, or just to review, the department has three rolling deadlines during the school year. That what it is, is by statute, they're required to provide any application that is submitted in that window within 30 days of the date. So for example, if we had it submitted before the October 15th deadline, they would be required essentially to give us feedback on the application by November 15th. The next date is January 15th. As we alluded to a bit at the last board meeting with the questions that we had about. As we alluded to a bit at the last board meeting with the questions that we had about the plan, and then further discussion that Mr. Cudray and I had, when we take the plan that we developed based upon the criteria of the department, and we begin to translate it into the application, there's some additional detail work that needs to be done. And so, as Ray said at the last meeting upfront, that if we did not make the October 15th deadline, it wasn't the end of the world, because there are three rolling deadlines through the year. And as you know, we really would prefer to make the first application right, and as we got into it, we just felt that it was good effort, it was assertive, and, and wanting to be looking, hey, could we get this in before the October 15th deadline? But even our first discussion, if you remember, I gave you a couple of different scenarios of a timeline, and at the end of the day, if you think about it, the final timeline is dependent upon the legislature, because we still have some work to do discussing around if we were to use the levy piece. We also have some other discussion about if, if the legislature does not pass additional funding for QCOM, because there's no money in the fund right now, but there's a reasonable chance they could pass some in the upcoming session. If they don't put the dollars in, then there's been a lot of work done for nothing, but we know the fact is going to be that that legislative answer is not going to come till late May at the earliest. So what Ray and I are just determining is that we want to make sure that we take our time, and make sure that we put together the best application that we possibly can. We've got very good start, the start is excellent, as you've seen, there's a lot of really good work that's been done, but we just felt we were, we were trying to make an October 15th deadline that we then realized was going to be counterproductive to our learn-term strategies and goals. So I don't have a date for when we'll bring it back to you yet. It may be the next meeting, it may not, but we're going to take some time and make sure that we have everything in the state's format, so that when we show it to you, it's the exact kind of thing that we're going to submit to the state. So at this time, I entertain any questions, but again, we, we were, we had really, I think, good intent and, and some, an aggressive timeline, and I think the determination was, as we knew from the beginning, that October 15th timeline might be too aggressive, and I think in the end, it proved to be.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
You bet.
So we'll move on now for, this evening, we only have one item for individual action, which is board policy 210.1 charter school authorizer conflict of interest, of which we had the first meeting, uh, excuse me, reading at our last board meeting. So if Dr. Hillman doesn't have anything additional to add, I would entertain a motion to approve policy 210.1 charter school authorizer conflict of interest as presented. Moved by Rob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Okay, second by Ellen. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Rob?
I can't remember if you covered this last time, but was there a model policy that you, where did this policy come from, the language?
Yes, so when it was, became very clear that we were going to have to adopt a separate authorizer conflict of interest policy, our original proposal to the department as part of our authorizer, our authorizer renewal process was that our existing conflict of interest policy governed this. And what happened is the department said, you know what, because remember, we're unique as one of only three school districts in the state who authorize charter schools. Most of the stuff is written for what is known as single-purpose authorizers. So after being told that our conflict of interest policy that you currently have in place was not acceptable, we asked the question to the department, can you share with us model policies that have been approved? So we were shared a number of different policies. This is the policy that we used from the three that they shared, and now I'm drawing a blank. I think it's novation authorizer, that this is the, one of the model policies from. We like it because it's pretty straightforward, it's a single page, you can range from one page to dozens of pages in, in some of these model policies, but what we did is we took one that we know the department has already approved, and then we modified it for our local use.
Yeah, sure.
And then I'm just interested in the numbering of these things, because we already have the 200 series, which it doesn't have to do with charter schools, so how and why 210.1?
So I'm going to look to the right, to Danita, and I think 2, isn't 210 our, our conflict? So the concept was to keep this particular conflict of interest policy attached to our regular board conflict of interest policy. And we do not, we're not required, most of our policies as a school board, most of your policies as a school board govern us in our charter school authorization activities. This is one policy that the department has said we need to have a specialized one. So I think that the logic was, you know, let's add it to the other conflict of interest policy, so if someone's looking for it, they're not looking in different locations, when they see conflict of interest, they see, oh, okay, there's one for the regular school board activities, and there's one for the charter school authorization activities.
Oh, go ahead, absolutely.
Most policies also have like references underneath, which refer to statutes or legal rulings, there's nothing here, so if there's nothing, I don't think we're going to do that.
I don't have an answer for you on that. The model policy that we used did not, now, because you remember, most of our model policies come from MSBA, you know, who do the legal statute references. When we use this one, we use the one from, that we know had been approved, and it was approved without those other legal references. So it would be something, if that is something that you would like us to look at and add to it, wouldn't be a problem at all.
I'm just wondering, because the need for this, for having this policy is not statutory, it's just rules set by the department?
So the legislation that sets up the charter school authorizations process informs the department of what they are needed to require us to do. So I believe that there, there has been some, with some single-purpose authorizers, I think that there has been some concerns about conflicts of interest with the board and the schools that they authorize, or some of the services that they utilize. And so, this was a legislative reaction several years ago to that, making sure that especially single-purpose authorizers have a specific policy that they're to go by. So there certainly is a couple of legislative, it would be the charter school law that we would reference. So again, this is the only policy that we would reference charter school law, but it's a piece we could certainly go back and dig those pieces up. Is that something, because we could certainly add that to the final policy, it's not a --
I mean, if it's
But then we shouldn't approve it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, so we would need to table, postpone the vote?
Correct.
I mean, I, I don't think that that's absolutely necessary, that there's in, it's a functioning, it, I mean, it's a functioning policy, that, that's just kind of apparatus that's in a lot of policies, but I'm not sure that it's necessary to make this work, so.
So if we move forward with the vote, then we could
We could always revise it, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have excellent questions, thanks, Rob. So we have a motion and a second, with other, other additional questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on now to items, to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping? Oh, I'm sorry, need a motion to approve the consent grouping. Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Jeff. I'm sorry, now, all those in favor, in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, the enrollment report, Dr. Hillman.
Well, we have good news again here with the very important October 1st enrollment report. What you're going to see is that the bottom line is that we are at 4,049 and a half students, I believe, as my piece just decided to quit here. So we're at 4,049.5, and of course, the reason that we have .5 is that we do have some shared time students that don't count as full-time students in terms of just their shared time with some other institutions. So what you're going to see is that we are up from the September 6th count, which is very good, because remember that October 1st enrollment report is a really critical one for a number of things with the department in terms of funding and a number of other components. So we're very pleased, this now is a new high, it's the new highest total that we've had, and so we're really pleased to see that number going up. We're also talking, we're very interested to see, as you know, in November, we'll have the enrollment options report. We're very interested to see how that comes out this time, to give us a little bit more information about the growth, because as you recall, when Hazel Reinhardt did our demographic study, her prediction was we were going to initially see lower numbers in our elementaries, and that has not materialized yet. I wouldn't count Hazel out quite yet, because she's had a good track record, but we want to know what is spurring the growth. Is it additional open enrollment? Is it additional housing that's been constructed here in Northfield? That's going to really give us some insight in terms of the long-term reliability of those numbers. So it's good news to have, and as a piece, we just want to figure out again, even when it's something that's going in the positive direction, we want to try to ascertain why it is. So really good, good news here for the October 1st enrollment count.
Okay, other questions about the enrollment report or comments? It's, one comment, it's nice to see the fifth grade class sizes there with the addition of the additional section of fifth grade at Sibley. Very manageable class sizes there. But I always get a little concerned when I see, if you look back to kindergarten of 247 students, that's a very, very low number of kindergartners, so we hope that continues to maintain. So, any other questions on the enrollment report? So just a reminder of future meetings, Monday, October 24th, we have a regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM in the high school media center, and as well on Monday, November 14th, also at 7:00 PM. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Moved by Noel, is there a second?